I'd like to call this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Our land acknowledgement statement, we the municipality of Red Lake acknowledge our foundation and spaces in which we live and maintain are on the unceded lands of the Inishnapec of Red Lake, the traditional lands of Laksool and Wambsgang First Nations and Treaty III Territory. As we are all treaty people, we will continue to cherish our reciprocate of all of our relationships on these sacred lands and waters. Anyone present may not record video or audio and/or leave cellphone on without permission of the Chair. A disclosure of community interest in the general nature of for this meeting and for the minutes of meeting in which a member was not in attendance, seeing none. Delegation and deputations, Chris Grant from Donatar, presentation on Trout Lake Forest Sustainable Forest License Forest Certification Program. Welcome.
Okay, great. Thank you, Council, for allowing me to attend your meeting tonight. I have three main objectives here tonight is to, number one is to introduce myself, kind of do a sustainable forest licence 101 and follow up with Donatar's third party certification program on the Trout Lake Forest. So, sustainable forest licences are regulated in Ontario under the Crown Forest Sustainability Act. Tonight I will speak specifically on the Trout Lake Forest, which is assigned to Donatar. All of Ontario, the northern part of the working forests of Ontario is designated or broken into sustainable licences. The licence holders are required to prepare forest management plans. Currently, Donatar holds two SFLs, the Trout Lake and the Waboo, but also Donatar specifically, we hold wood supply commitments from Red Lake Forest, Laksool Forest, and the Dryden Forest. And we also participate as a shareholder in the Canora Forest regionally, so very active in the Northwest. So, just to back up a second, so, again, my name is Chris Grant, I'm just taking the role of Forest Lands Manager, first of September. Jack Harrison, which some of you may have known, has recently retired. I spent all of my career working in Northern Ontario, specifically the northeastern Ontario, spent a little bit of time in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, but I like to say to people, this is the second time I've worked in the 807, because when I started working after university, I started in a little town on the River, Ontario, just on the western edge of, or eastern edge of the 807. So, under the CFSA, in this state of forest licence and forest management plan, basically the key obligations of any company which holds a licence is to follow the regulatory process, which includes forest management plans, anywhere schedules, and the reports. Then you, then the operations that follow from the forest management plan is basically room building, access, harvesting, and hauling to wood mills. In the case of the Trout Forest, the primary wood consumers are Ecom Song Mill near Falls, Warehouses Strand Board Mill in Canora, and Donatar's pulp mill in Dryden. But most importantly, forest management planning, forest operations, and renewable, right? So, the SFL is obligated to renew the forest. And the various techniques to renew the forest, there's tree planting, aerial seeding, and also manual tending, brush songs, and herbicide. After regeneration activities, we also have what we call regeneration assessments, food to grow. So that again is plan, do, check, right? So, plan, do, check. Once you're done harvesting, silviculture, and then verify your renewal activities. Also within the CFSA, the province of Ontario has independent forest audits, so we do have auditing within the context of the legislation. But also companies choose to pursue third party certifications. And again, a constant theme in forestry we use quite often is plan, do, check, plan, do, check, right? So, it's all about continuous learning, improving your operations, improving your practices, improving your relationships, and continuously improve.
Am I on the right slide?
Yeah, I jumped ahead. So again, it's part of our forest sustainability principles. So again, what is forest certification? I talked about independent audits, which is governed by the legislation. Independent third party certification verifies for consumers. This is more of a consumer driven model, that wood and paper products they purchase originate from sustainable and responsibly managed forest. Forest certification, third party forest certification has been evolving over 20 years, aided by increased consumer awareness, environmental activism, and responsible manufacturing. There's various standards for forest certification, Forest Stewardship Council, Sustainable Forestry Institute Initiative, and also at one point Canadian Standards Association, which is still present. Again, if you go home and look at your various paper products, or if you look at your deck, you will see third party verification on those products. So, there are, most consumer products will have labels associated with them. So, it's an exercise for everybody to go home tonight and see how many labels they can find at home. So again, so where are we currently with forest certification? So, on the Trout Forest, we are currently certified to the SFI, the Forest Steward, Sustainable Forestry Initiative, but this 2/4, end of November into December, we will be seeking Forest Stewardship Council certification on the Trout Forest. So this is going to be a registration audit. We currently have FSC certification on the Waboo Forest, so what we've learnt on the Waboo, we're going to bring to the Trout. Successful certification helps to position our products in the marketplace and supports the facilities which utilise wood from the forest. And again, it's all about building economic drive, employment in the forest, as demand for these products increases, being third party certification. So just a quick, just a quick talk about FSC steward, FSC certification. There is a national standard. Within Canada, there's various forest types, so the Trout Lake Forest will be certified to the Boral Standard. Within FSC, there are nine key principles, and each one of these principles in this registration audit will be looked at in depth, in depth. If you go on FSC website, standards are present, you can download and review them, and everything is open to the public. So, there's been a lot of work leading up to the audit, which will take place at the end of November. But again, once, once you're audited, again, plan, do, check. We just start the process, right, of continuous improvement, if we are successful. So again, then following the registration audit, there are annual surveillance audits. And during a surveillance audit, various principles will be audited, not an entire audit. So again, plan, do, check. And again, in our mind, with all of our audits, be it regulatory, be it third party, it's always striving for continuous improvement. We need to continually learn, we need to continue to listen, and continue to improve our operations, and forestry, just not the forestry operations, but the forest communities amongst, amongst the licenced area. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, is there any resource revenue sharing with the First Nations people?
Yes.
In regards to the forestry piece, and I'm not sure of the term, I think it's called stumpage maybe, stumpage fees?
Yeah.
What does that look like?
Yeah, so, when wood is delivered to a mill from the various forest management units, there is stumpage fees. Stumpage fees includes renewal, and, yeah, renewal, and forestry futures, money that's also paid to the government, those are the main components. So, there are various resource revenue agreements in the province. I can't speak to this area specifically, I just don't have that data, but there isn't a number of agreements in the province. There are some areas which do not have rules.
And to your, to your awareness, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, is there any resource revenue sharing with municipalities, or is it mainly First Nations?
To my knowledge, it's currently First Nations.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? We appreciate your coming up tonight, and it was actually quite interesting. It's nice to see the reforestation process is definitely looked after. It's definitely a renewable resource, and we want to keep it that way.
Sure. Again, I appreciate your time. My contact info from the presentation, I'll be in this region throughout the seasons, throughout the months. Anytime you want me to come in, in this forum or elsewhere, just reach out, please. Again, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So administrative reports, Mr. CAO with Rural Ontario Municipal Association, virtual conference, and delegations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We've got the Rural Ontario Municipal Association Roma coming up here in January, beginning January 23rd to the 25th. This is a virtual conference. As we've done with the other virtual conferences, we've just registered myself and the mayor, and those who want to sit in for any key speakers, or any, any other type of forums, they're welcome to sit in, and this will be the venue. Delegation requests are due, the deadline is on Monday. So, for today's purposes, and perhaps if you don't mind, we could tie in the Ogra conference as well into this discussion, because that too is coming up, that'll be in March of 2020, but perhaps we can have a discussion this evening. What I need, the one takeaway is what delegations are we going to submit for Roma, and then, again, tying in Ogra, which ones do we want to, you know, submit for Ogra? And for your information, Ogra is face to face. So, perhaps, you know, there are a number of priorities that we have, like infrastructure priorities, we see it everywhere, in every one of our communities, you know, water, wastewater, most recently, the failures we had at lift station one, which is a key lift station for all of Red Lake, the majority of the wastewater goes through that, that station, aside from a portion that would basically be Berry Drive and the Kelson's Dupont, Kelson's, the Kelson's Farm area as well. So I'd like to open it up, again, Roma's virtual, Ogra's face to face, and I think there's a big difference there. So, it, I think, I believe, I recommend that if there's the strong topics we want to sit in front of, we want to have a face to face. The virtual's great, but you see, you see the minister, the PA, or the deputy minister, whoever's representing the ministry, you see one face, you don't see the other faces. There's so much value sitting at a table across from, you know, the minister, the minister's chief of staff, and the bureaucrat, so just keep that in mind. So I'll leave it to Mr. Chair to, I guess, to see what council's desires are.
So does anybody have someone they would like to speak to as such?
So, just for transportation, do we have, do we know what's happened with the bridge and all that? It'd be kind of nice to have a chat with them, to find out what the actual plans are there, so, so we can plan, right? So I think that would be one, I might think I would like to see, just have that discussion, find out what's going on, and.
So that would be pertaining to these, the Road South subject matters?
Yeah.
So on that, that could be a number of different ministries, could MTO, could be Environment, could be Finance, but obviously Transportation's not a good one, and even the Ministry of Business Strategy.
Yeah. Telecommunication as well, would be, would be very beneficial to get communication throughout that sector as well, since there's going to be a fair bit of traffic within that. Anybody else? Counselor Bede, do you have anybody you'd like to?
I think the ones that we've been trying to get in and haven't had much success, we can't try and pick and choose a better face to face, or I think we still, even if it's virtual, I think we still have to go, go at them just to get in the door.
Yeah.
We've had a few there, and we haven't had much luck with it all. I don't think it's worth waiting for the face to face, we have to try and apply.
Is there a specific one you?
Well, it's one that's always, we never get in with the Minister of Finance, right? There's that. We always seem to struggle to get in with Rickford for one of the three or four hats he's wearing, whether it's the mining, or that sort of thing, Crown Land.
So on the Crown Land piece, we met with Rick, Mr. Rickford, for the AML conference. So that process, we've commenced that process, that's traditionally, it takes many years. One of our neighbours is, I believe, in the eighth year of acquiring Crown Land. So we need to be patient, there's, there's a lot of work with that, however, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but there definitely seems to be, there's a commitment to sell us some Crown Land near a highway commercial, but again, we have to go through the process. There has been assertions made that they're going to try to streamline that process. What that looks like, we're not quite sure yet, but, so, I mean, based on our meeting at AML, I don't believe we should bring up Crown Land, again, not yet.
And there's a new diligence on the municipality piece in regards to Crown Land for that data collection for us to submit to, which is a lengthy process to gather that information. Well, it's going to take some time.
Mayor Moore, do you have anything?
Well, I have a laundry list.
Oh, awesome.
Quite a few, quite a few initiatives. In regards to infrastructure, I mean, a 15 minute meeting typically doesn't hold it all, but again, our Reach facility, you know, speaking to that, our wastewater, water lift station, as the CA will lead to the fact. Internet, I had written down for our Mattson folks, because they're still without internet right now, and the provincial government was speaking about stepping that up as well too. With our fire department, we're doing some investigation right now in regards to fire trucks responding from a municipality going to unorganised territory for calls, so we're looking into a specific delegation that we could potentially make to, I'm not sure if it's the Minister of Infrastructure yet, or which ministry kind of holds that, but in regards to get some funding, or some dollars even towards a new fire truck, because I'm aware down in Nation that they did receive funding, but I don't know from which intergovernmental office it was from, for those fire trucks responding outside their encashment area. So, I'd like to nail that down as well too. Now, Minister Rickford, as, as we're all aware, he holds a lot of different offices and different hats, so I'd like to see us just do a separate delegation, maybe even more specifically with Roma, in regards to speaking with him around Indigenous services and affairs regarding the Road South, and a potential shared services agreement in the landfills, working with our First Nation friends to the north. And more in face, if it's possible, with him, to talk about our wildfire situation, wildfire situation in regards to prevention measures that they plan on doing, legacy mines, of course Crown Land, and again, as we say every time we meet the Minister, we want to speak about our Reach facility, and go back on to that. With finance, we know there's some announcements in regards to resource revenue sharing with the Northern municipalities, maybe receiving some small amounts of dollars, but I want to speak specifically to the Minister of Finance as well too, in regards to true resource revenue sharing for the dollars that leave Red Lake here, and looking for those percentages coming back. And again, when we met face to face, we bumped into Minister Bethan Peltier during our last Ogra conference, and he wanted to know more about our Reach program, and since that time, he's been made Minister of Finance, so it might be a good opportunity for us to get in and see the Minister, or when we're down in for that over a PDAC time, again, trying to get in to see him on a Plough meeting. The Ministry of Health, in regards to Road South, which has been mentioned here, there's a, the overall health of our residents, it's going to be increased capacities for our meeting bed hospital, so we're going to be looking to explore contingency planning, hopefully, and talk about the potential doctor shortages that we're facing now currently, but if we're expanding, how are we supposed to look after that population coming into the hospital, so we're going to need some support with that. And another note I made was in regards to environment conservation and parks, again, our landfill challenges, and when we had met with the Minister previously, we discussed about a pilot program in regards to recycling and the losses that we experienced with transporting those recyclable goods to Winnipeg, and the cost associated with that, and we've heard nothing back in regards to that pilot type of program, so we want to know where we stand with that, or is there any other new programs that can assist us from a municipal perspective? And don't forget, during these Ogras, PDACs, when we are face to face, last time, we had the privilege of meeting with the Premier, which we got in with a meeting, so I'm looking to get into a meeting with the Premier again too, and meeting with Andrea Harath, the NDP leader, she may be helpful for a couple of our initiatives, especially Reach, and maybe getting a meeting with, or it doesn't need Stephen Del Duke, the Liberal Party leader, because I have no Red Lake's needs. For the amount of money that leaves this community, I think Red Lake deserves the attention, and we need to listen to our needs and start investing back into our needs. So that's a few things that I have that you asked, so, thanks.
Perfect. On the end of the health part of it as well, I think we should also look into the elderly. Due to the fact that we're going to get a Road South, we may wind up inheriting some of the, and I don't mean inheriting, I mean assisting the elderly living piece of it from our friends north, coming down and needing the housing.
And that will be a challenge for us, especially, when we had spoken last time to the Minister of Health and Long Term Care in regards to our home for the age, the challenge was trying to get residents into the nursing home, and the challenges those pose. I mean, we're moving in the right direction by creating those relationships with Northern District Service Board, and that senior assisted housing, transitional housing piece, but there's going to even be more of a need coming for our community, and as our baby boomers, we know what that population is like moving forward, so that definitely have to be planned for the future.
Exactly.
But at the same time, we also have to be mindful that our hospital is going to be having more traffic, not just from the Road South, but even the transient population that comes into our community with the mining, the logging, everything that happens, and if we're able to offer more services, and I'll use the example of a CT scan, for example, the provincial government will be saving money instead of paying people for travel grants heading down the highway and heading out of town all of the time. So I think that's going to be a win-win for everyone, but we need those type of investments from the province.
Counselor Kristoff.
So just to add to the, it might be worth it to reach out to seniors on accessibility as well, have a discussion with that with them, because that, for our area, that could, you know, possibly housing, possibly transportation, maybe buses or something like that, or, you know, because it is going to be an issue, and it is for our area, so it might be good to touch base with them, maybe they can help out in other areas too, so.
Yeah. Exactly.
That's Minister Chow, I think, Chow.
I'm not sure. Okay, sir. Okay. Yes, sir.
I'm going to try to summarise this. Okay, so Roma, and not to say that one, one issue is more critical than another, but, so, with Indigenous Affairs, perhaps Indigenous Affairs, Finance, and Health, and seniors on accessibility, could that be for Roma?
For sure.
The virtual?
Yeah.
Odds of us seeing Minister Christine Elliott are quite slim, so we're likely, we're going to get a PA, so we might as well do that virtually.
And if we don't get it, we can apply for Ogra.
Correct, we can. And then for Ogra, the face to face infrastructure, Northern Development Mines, and then, of course, MRF, and then environment conservation and parks. And like the mayor said, if we're unsuccessful with the, you know, with our request for Roma, then we'll try again for Ogra. And then we'll, I'll, I'll have to, there might be a couple ministries when it comes to what the mayor brought up regarding the unorganised areas and our, and our fire department responding to those calls, because when we're doing that, we're taking a unit and our people away from a potential situation that could happen within our community. We've also, with that particular item, we've, we've reached out to another community that, that might know of some funding opportunities, but. know of some funding opportunities, but we'll work out some details of that. The Ogra and tied into PDAC, that's an important time, when, back in 2019, when we went to Ogra and stayed and then went on to PDAC, there was, we met with the premier, we met with Song Merakua, Andrew Horath, and a few other ministries, Indigenous Affairs, I believe, as well. So, there's a great opportunity to get in front, and those opportunities to get, to go to Queen's Park and have that, it's not fifteen minutes, it's half an hour, whereas you're sitting with, in the case of 2019, with the premier and his senior staff, and we can have, you know, some really meaningful conversations. Election, provincial election's coming up, so, I mean, this is really a time for us to, I guess, push our priorities. Prior to the meeting, this evening, the mayor and I were sitting, and just going over priorities, you know, and listing them, and it's a good exercise, and I encourage everyone to do that. We do it from the senior staff, we apply priorities, but it's a really good exercise, because even just the forty-five minutes we did today, there was things that popped up, and it helps us to think, to think ahead.
And some of it, too, is, you know, you want a delegation with, and I'll use Minister Rickford, for example, you only have the one fifteen-minute slot, but there's so many things to talk about from an Indigenous perspective, mining, and of course, forestry, right? Trying to fit everything into fifteen minutes is very challenging. So, the opportunities to ask for meetings while we're down there, especially in between the PDACs are really helpful, or even breaking them up as separate requests, as we suggested, maybe the first delegation for Roma, asking for Indigenous Affairs, and then our next one will be asking for Northern Development Mines. So, it becomes challenging, but we'll do the best that we can, and as the CEA's already been prepared, it's election time coming, so hopefully they'll be, we'll have a hole with a lot of our issues and needs, concerns.
I know. Yes, sir.
So, what I've said to the Ogra is, I believe I sent out an email asking if there was anyone interested in attending Ogra, and again, those dates are February twenty-seventh to, I believe, March the second in Tron. So, aside from the mayor and myself, and of course, our infrastructure development coordinator, Todd Olson, will be attending, that's a valuable compliment for Todd.
Anybody else interested in going?
I believe I'm working, but if there's no one else going, I could look into taking time off, if there's someone else available.
I believe Counselor Hager has, she has stated she is not interested in attending Ogra.
Counselor Kristoff?
I'll have to wait and see.
Okay.
If I want to pay for that, I'll be able to, so.
When's the...
The sooner the better. I don't know the cutoff for registration. Christina, do you recall? We've booked rooms, so that we've done.
We've booked one extra room because accommodations came open. I feel like the cutoff for Ogra early bird is the end of this month.
Yeah. I'll definitely go if nobody else wants to go. Because I attended last year, I would recommend somebody else, but I will go if nobody else can.
Okay. So, sorry, Counselor Purdue, so you'd be a no because of your work?
Right, no, yeah.
So, since Counselor Butterfield...
Yeah, if he's willing, that's...
And Counselor Kristoff, right at this point, you're likely a no?
Likely a no, like, I would say, two weeks I would, I would go.
Okay. Would you like us to hold off? Well, because we're gonna flow into the PDAC as well, so perhaps you can comment.
Yeah, just comment.
I'm just, sorry, sorry, finish.
No, no, I was just going to move into PDAC.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
So, PDAC is March the seventh to the ninth. There's also an online portion that starts, I believe, on the tenth and the eleventh. Red Lake has traditionally been at PDAC. It's, I would consider PDAC very similar to AMO. It seems that there's a lot of opportunity to meet with ministers and bureaucrats at an AMO, but PDAC, for one reason, the location of our booth is right near Ontario's booth, and last year, we had opportunities to meet with, like, Minister Yakubuski at the time, was Minister of Northern, no, of Natural Resources and Forestry. So, we were able to have, you know, some good dialogue with him, and then we set up additional meetings. So, it's very important that we're there, great opportunities. So, in saying that, we've always, we've have, we've have some volunteers that assist at the booth, but we will need that one other person, because a lot of times, myself and the mayor, or most times, we're at meetings, because meetings pop up, whether it could be with our First Nation neighbors, you know, mining companies. So, there's a lot of opportunities for some meaningful dialogue. So, is there anyone on council that has an interest in attending PDAC?
So, I do, but like, Ogra as well, I just need a week or so to figure out where things are going, and, but yeah, I would be, because I do think that's an important one, but like, as Counselor Butterfield said, I've gone before, so if there's anybody else who would like to do that.
Has Counselor Hager expressed anything about PDAC?
Not to myself, no.
Okay.
She hasn't mentioned anything in years ago.
Is she back next week?
She'll be back next Monday.
Yeah, so, can we put it off till when she's here, or not?
Then the question becomes, are we gonna be searching for volunteers, or we've discussed both staff coming in and out as well?
We have discussed staff as well. So, it's, it depends on how much we want to increase our investment. Last, well, in 2019, Counselor Kristoff, I did majority of adding the booth, and I think that would be the, unless I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that would be the expectation, again.
Sounds good. Any questions?
So, we'll wait until Counselor Hager returns, and then we'll pose the question. So, is it, are we, are we asking Counselor Hager if she wants to go to PDAC, and if she does, then is that what we'll add?
I think I could probably work it out, too, it's near the end of my schedule, so I wouldn't have to take the whole block off, so there's that option, too.
Sounds good. So, we'll bring it up at Monday's meeting. And present it to everybody that's here, and see where it goes. Would that be enough time for you, Counselor Kristoff, next Monday?
Possibly, yeah.
So, we'll put Ogra attendance and PDAC attendance on there?
I think so, if we can. Perfect. Thank you, thank you for all your information.
Can I just add one thing for the delegations? I think we're all good, and we've got lots of things on our plate, obviously, different areas. If it does come up with, we get in front of the MRF, that, I don't think it's our spot to be pushing the Wally slot limit, which has been brought up a couple times. If there is a group that wants to push it, I believe that's up to them to push it themselves, it's not a town thing. We've never really discussed it, and if we had more facts, I just don't think we have enough facts ourselves to make that decision. We let the forest fighters, we let them fight the fires, we don't tell them how to do their jobs. I believe it's the same thing with the Wally, so.
Just for your information, Counselor Purdue, tourism is part of municipality and protecting the slots of the Wally, but with our last delegation, we decided to leave that with the ministry, so they'll be doing their own assessments coming from the future, but we wanted to share our concerns at that time.
No, I understand it's always been a concern, but we've always, we've never said we're gonna do it, and then we do it kind of on the spot. I think it should be something we should all talk about as a group, and we should all endorse, or else, you know, it shouldn't just be an on-the-spot thing.
I can just add to...
Yes, sir.
The intent, or the subject matters that we should bring up to MRF is, it almost feels like our new norm with the last two summers with these wildfires, we have to work, and we have, I mean, it was, the collaboration, the partnerships, you know, it was, it was really nice to see, and we need to, I guess, enhance that even more, and we're gonna try to arrange a meeting with the MRF forest fighter team, and look for opportunities to further protect our community. And there's been some preliminary discussion, but we need, it's great to have those discussions, I think locally, we all agree that it's somewhat of our new norm for now, but it's worse, there's gotta be funding mechanisms to support that. So, that would be something, I believe from a staff perspective, we should talk to the minister about, and then also tying that with itself component and the opportunities.
Yes, Counselor?
That has been mentioned at a couple of the LCC meetings about how in BC they're doing some cuts around communities. I never said anything from the town's perspective, because we've never really discussed it, but I think, like you said, that might be something we should look at, and if there's funding and working together. I don't know if it has to be within the town limits, or if it's further up, but there have been some, Robert Partridge had mentioned it, too. He'd probably be a good guy to talk to, but obviously, going back to last year with the blowdown area that we had cleaned up, you know, that was a huge thing for us, and the potentials are, so if we could, or what it would look like, it's obviously not an easy decision, but it might be worth exploring if we could put some, some sort of barrier or, however they do, a long cut to...
Even within the municipality itself, like when MRF was putting up fire protection throughout the community this summer, that was one of the things that they were looking at, was like, between the forestry base and Red Lake's Discovery Road, or sorry, Cultural Road, that section was definitely a concern.
Yeah.
And, yes?
I was just gonna say to Counselor Purdue, well, Counselor Purdue has that information that's been shared at that group, it might be...
It hasn't really been shared, it was just kind of brought up that it's been done here, could we do it here? They're talking about your falls, too, and that sort of thing, so. If that's something we want, maybe I can get ahold of Robert, either through that or on the side, and sit down with him and talk, or have him come and do a presentation, or...
Well, even if we can just utilize his knowledge and, you know, his resources in that respect, so if we provide a brief note that we have additional background information, you know, so the fire protection is one, but again, it's the one road out, you know, is there opportunities, and this has been brought up, I forget at which table, but that, you know, the work that was done, you know, is there, is there an opportunity to connect some, some older logging roads, make sure that there is an alternative route for our community to evacuate, other than just highway one oh five and air? So, that's, that's something else to look at. The only funding program we're aware of is, I think it's called Community Safe, but they'll fund up to $5,000. Well, I mean, that just turns the fellow on.
Yeah, exactly. One trip to Petrow Camp.
Yeah. So, that's part of that, that exercise of discussing priorities and, you know, the risks and opportunities, and that's something that we had discussed this afternoon as well, so.
Definitely.
That'd be good.
Right on. Very interesting. So, we'll go down to new business, 7.1, Canora District Municipal Association, AGM, attendance and resolutions. So, we have the KDMA conference in Dryden on 2022, on January nineteenth to the twentieth.
Yeah, so the agenda had come out, well, I know I forwarded to council today, but our clerk had shared it with me, perhaps on Friday.
Yes.
I don't, I don't recall, but, so, we'd like to know who would, who'd be interested in attending the KDMA this year in Dryden, January nineteenth and twentieth. Looks like two full days on the agenda, that I briefly glanced at. Counselor Hager is a yes to go. How do you see it?
It's the nineteenth and the twentieth, January?
Correct. In a week.
Thank you. Time's on eight. Sorry.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely go.
Yeah, definitely, so.
Sounds like everyone's, will be attending. So, that would be an arrival, like, late January eighteenth, and then that on the twentieth, okay? So, we'll need eighteen, nineteenth for sure for rooms, potentially the twentieth? The agenda has it going right till five o'clock, preferences that people are not driving, at night, you want to check on the wireless, we all know dangers, we can discuss that further. So, for registration purposes, everyone's...
There's also the matter of resolutions. Resolutions are due December tenth. So, if council has any resolutions, I'd like to inform you.
So, we have 7.2 bylaws for discussion?
Yeah, I believe this, this item, Counselor Kristoff was going to raise in our comments.
Yeah, so, so I just wanted to bring this up for discussion. So, I had a few community members just ask about how do you look to do with the bylaw, or is, if there is something, or, and I just thought maybe we could have staff investigate it, just check out other communities. So, what it is, is a lot of people, a lot of people are up walking, and there's a lot of people that are scared of dogs, and a lot of dogs are tied up in the front yard, and there's nothing in the front yard except for the road or the sign lock. So, if you're walking with your dog, you get dogs constantly coming out at you on leash, generally, I think they're pretty much all on leashes, you know? That was just a concern of, some people have been scared of walking the streets because of dogs coming out barking. You know, a lot of big dogs, or a giant dog, there's nothing, but it still scares some people when you're walking, that big dog comes barking over there. some people when you're walking, that big dog is barking over there. Is, is there something out there that, like that, do other communities have, say, you have a bylaw where you can't have your dog tied up in the front yard? You've got backyards, generally, you're fenced in. So I'm just throwing that out there for discussion, is that something we can ask staff to look at, or, I know it's a, it's a touching situation or subject, but, anyways, I think I've sent that, even if they're just asking to see if there's any other communities that have something along those lines, or.
Yeah, so if it's the will of all of council, we can certainly do canvas areas, other communities, to see what, what their bylaws look like as it pertains to, to dogs. I believe the last time we reviewed the, correct me if I'm wrong, clerk, but it was two years ago, the dog bylaw?
Correct.
But we can certainly do a canvas and see what other communities are doing, and if there's anything specific to, to concerns raised to you, Counsel Kristoff?
So I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts about, or, it was kind of for a discussion to.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, it's, yeah, it's a catch-22, too, I, I see both, both ways, some people's backyards aren't set up. Yeah. Maybe if there's certain dogs that are really aggressive, I really don't know, do we ask for them to be reported, and go from there? It's all over, because then you get people walking down the middle of the street with their dogs too, so do we make a bylaw, you have to walk on the sidewalk with your dogs?
But that, they could be walking down the other street because they're scared, dogs are going to come running out from the yard, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, it's on both sides of the, so, yeah, it's, it's a fine line, if there's been no attacks.
Yeah.
Obviously, if there's an attack, there's, there's, there is an issue. But if there is a young kid walking down the sidewalk, and there's a dog three feet away at the end of the rope just slobbering to bite him, that, that is a problem.
Yeah, and it could spook that child or that dog, the, the dog that's being walked, spook them onto the road, and that could create other issues, I don't know, but we can certainly, we'll do a review and we'll report back to council.
All right, moved by Counsel Verduke, seconded by Counsel Kristoff, resolved that the committee in the whole hereby adjourns the meeting to meet again at the call of the chair at five fifty-three. Everybody in favor?